2013, no joke. So we have Vaughn.
Yes.
For Jerry. All right. Everything else is cool. Approval of the minutes for March 18th.
I didn't say anything.
Glaring or otherwise?
Uh-uh. Hold on, hold on. It might have been one thing.
Yours, thank you.
The only comment, I don't know if we even want to include them, but when we talked about the discussion and possible actions for housing incentive zone, we never said that we scheduled a public hearing. That ought to be in here.
Yeah, we probably should add that.
Make that the last sentence.
Yeah.
Public hearing was scheduled for.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
And I guess the round is...
Yeah. Mr. Gallagher. Record now is from the bench. All right. So without any other comments, we will move to adopt the minutes, accept the minutes for the March 18th meeting.
So moved.
All right. Accepted. That brings us to the public hearing for tonight. Read the call, Ed.
Agenda for the public hearing to be held on Monday, April 1st, in the main meeting room, Simsbury Town Offices, 933 Hopmetto Street, Simsbury, Connecticut. At the hearing, a proposed workforce housing overlay zone regulation draft will be discussed dated March 5, 2013. Copies of the draft regulation are available in the office of the town clerk, at the land use office, and on the town website, Land Use Department, or, excuse me, or on the Land Use Department page at www.simsbury-ct.gov. At this hearing, all parties may present their opinions. Signed, Edward Pavage, Secretary.
So I'm glad everyone could come. Before we start, I'm going to have Hiram give an overview. I just wanted to give a little preamble that the zoning commission has been considering and talking about this particular topic for, I would say, two years.
Has it been that long?
A year and a half, anyway.
I guess that's right.
And from when it was first proposed, and it's had taken many forms, and we've thought quite a bit about this. There's been a lot of discussion about it. There was a particularly good session of the commission openly talking about their views probably four or five meetings ago, January, I believe, early January. And we've given it a lot of thought, and we're glad to finally be in a position where we can now listen to what the public has to say about it as we present what we think represents a step in the right direction to try to address issues around places for people who want to work in this and live in this town to make it a more balanced community. So with that preamble, I'll let Hiram speak to where we are. All right?
Just a bit of an overview. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things that I want to mention is the copies of the regulation are available. There's some here this evening, too, in case anybody's more there's some on the chairs in the front, I think, as a copy. I'm not going to certainly go over the regulation in detail this evening because I think you've all seen that. Hopefully, the public has had a chance to see it as well. There are a couple of things that I need to do, though, just to be sure that is correct. One of the things that the public was given and also was on the website were frequently asked questions about workforce housing. Those specifically addressed things like costs or potential costs for increase in education, whether such a development would lower property values, whether it would ruin folks' neighborhood, create excessive traffic, create excessive parking on streets in the neighborhood. And then there were some specific websites that referenced studies to answer those questions as well. So I think this is worded fairly objectively and hopeful people, anybody that's concerned with these items, would have taken a look at those things as well. Make sure that the question says a copy of those things as well. At the last planning commission meeting, I want to, this is just a little bit long, but I need to read this into the record. The Simsbury Planning Commission, its regular meeting of 3/26/13, discussed the draft workforce housing overlay zone regulation in front of the zoning commission at this time and finds the following. One, the 2007 Plan of Conservation Development and its housing chapter, that Simsbury lacks housing diversity, as stated on page 117. WHOZ draft regulations stated its purpose is to create additional housing opportunities within Simsbury while promoting the appropriate development of Simsbury's historic town center and other areas of the community. Number two, that although recent amendments to the town center zoning through the adoption of the center code and the addition of the planned area development regulation, most of the zoning regulations strictly segregate residential areas from other uses. Few of these housing units within, which are within walking distance of the commercial centers, and that's also on page 117. Two of the primary changes of the 2007 Plan of Conservation Development are, first, to enable greater diversity in Simsbury's housing options, since 85% of all the housing units in Simsbury are single-family detached units. A percentage of it has stayed fairly constant since the 1970s. And secondly, to allow mixed-use developments that will bring residents closer to and within the commercial areas. Number four, planning commission has incorporated, on page 118 of the Plan of Conservation Development, a number of recommendations that are applicable to this referral, including the following: Creating mixed-use zoning districts that will allow residential uses within our village centers, including Simsbury Center, Terrafill, West Simsbury, West Street, and Wheaton. Secondly, permitting residential uses to be primary element in any future development of scale. Thoroughly emphasizing market affordable housing in the new residential developments where the income and sale price restrictions and percentage of affordable units are determined locally rather than by state or federal program or policy. In addition, number five, in addition to 2007 Plan of Conservation Development, has the following goal: To provide for a range of housing choices that meet the needs and preference of Simsbury's residents of all ages and economic circumstances, and that's on page 119. Following policies are also directly applicable to this referral. Policy three, on page 121, encourage the availability of a range of housing types and densities, even though the densities are potentially higher. Any concerns regarding this would be addressed through sewer, water, and design options according to the draft regulation. Policy four, on page 122, promote housing programs and development efforts that directly benefit residents who have limited economic means and/or limiting physical conditions, including first-time homebuyers, low-income individuals and families and elderly, and handicapped persons. That's objective B on page 122. There are details of that policy there as well. Policy five, encourage diverse housing patterns where public water and sewers are available because of the densities. Objective D details that policy. And finally, planning commission found that the above goals, policies, and objectives to be in keeping with the draft WHOZ regulation. However, it should be noted that the proposal to increase housing density needs to be integrated with a careful analysis of sewer and water capacities for any given site. In addition, certain aspects of design will also play a large role in determining the acceptability of any WHOZ proposal. And that was passed unanimously by the planning commission at their meeting on the 26th. I received also a letter from the Capitol Region Council of Governments. This is a referral that's required by law to be sent to the CROG. And just very briefly, their comments. The commissioners, the receipt is acknowledged of the above-mentioned referral notice that this proposal was transmitted to the planning division of the Capitol Region Council of Governments under the provisions of section 8-3B of the Connecticut General Statutes as amended. The comment of the staff is this: The staff of the regional planning commission of the Capitol Region Council of Governments has reviewed this referral and finds no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies or the concerns of neighboring towns. We commend the town for its efforts to promote affordable housing options in the community, to strengthen community design, and preserve the historic character of the town center area. Questions concerning this referral should be directed to Lynn Pike DeSanto at CROG. I just want to make sure you knew that we did have that referral. Two more quick things, if I may. Received an email today from Stephen Stang, who was obviously somebody in town that has expressed interest in this particular concept before. I think the last time we had this in front of the commission, he had some reservations about the way it was proposed. And so we went back to sort of square one and resubstantiated some of the things that we thought were true but are much more clear in the current draft iteration. Stephen called me this morning and said, as I indicated today in our phone conversation, I regret that I will not be able to attend this evening's meeting regarding workforce overlay zone regulations as I am traveling. I'm disappointed that I will miss it as this issue is of strong interest to me. I just wanted to let him know that, that wanted to be right into the record. And then finally, what I have is a copy of a memo from the town attorney. He had asked that this obviously be sent to Bob for comments. There are four comments that Bob made. One is eligible zones. Regulation does not specify the eligible underlying zones where the WHOZ overlay may be applied. It appears that the WHOZ zone may be applied to any zone, including those that don't currently allow residential uses. And I could comment on these later on if you wish, and Glenn is here as well from Planometrics and has some thoughts and some comments on it as well you may be interested in. Number two, eligible parcels. The WHOZ zone does not specify a minimum or maximum lot size. It appears that any size lot is eligible for the WHOZ overlay zone. There is no statutory or regulatory requirement for a minimum or maximum lot size. Therefore, the decision to permit the WHOZ overlay zone on any parcel size is a policy choice for the commission. Section 10, N6, dimensional standards. The draft WHOZ zone allows the commission complete discretion to modify any dimensional standard. This may be too broad of a delegation of discretion to the commission and may violate the uniformity requirement of the general statute, section 8-2. I suggest a revision that permits a set percentage of modification as an upper limit for each dimensional standard in Article 8. And finally, the review standards. The WHOZ zone requires a zone map amendment, a text amendment, and the issuance of a special permit. Draft regulation, however, does not reference any standards in the zoning regulations for consideration and approval of each required application. Town Attorney suggests a cross-reference to Article 7, Section C, and Article 5, Section J, of the existing regulations to inform applicants of the standards and criteria for consideration and approval of the overlay zone map and special permit requirements. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that those were the town attorney's comments. Without getting into a great deal in detail on that now, I can say that out of the four comments, I've talked with Glenn about this before, and it's our considered opinion that we agree with the last comment. We think the rest of them are items which the commission should have and should retain discretion on, and would be able to do that in any given context should an application come before the commission. We feel strongly about that. Have no problem with making the reference to special permit standards, so it's quite appropriate. Unless you have any other specific questions, Ms. Chairman, I'm glad to sit down and see if anybody else has...
I have...
Amy, please.
Um, was there a, an opinion other than just, I wanted to be here, as whether it was supportive or not supportive with Mr. Stang's?
I can tell you I talked to him. He's very interested in going forward. He didn't write that in his email.
No, that's why I was just looking for that. I wasn't sure if that had been...
Was he one of the landowners that...
Yes, he was, yeah.
Correct.
Terrafill Mill.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I asked him that again, and apparently he's already gone on his trip, so he didn't respond to me, but I can relay that to you.
That's all I needed to know because the email wasn't quite clear.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. I think we really want to have an opportunity for the public to speak here. Are there questions from the public about what we're talking about in terms of a work, workforce incentive zone or overlay zone? Having asked that, we certainly will just open the mic to each, any of you that would like to speak. We'll start with the, Mr. Jim Gallagher.
Jim Gallagher, 27, White Oak Plains, Simsbury. I'm not sure why you're looking at this zone. You've got plenty as it is. You're worried about affordable housing. Don't forget you've got 260-some houses coming up the other end of town. I think there's 10%. In the Potter Forest, you had, I think they had 10 houses up there for town employees. And I didn't think they had a little trouble selling 1,080 square feet. I wonder what you qualify for this?
I'm not sure.
What's median income? Is that what it is? Because when you first came in, there were a lot in the end of the street, which is half commercial, half residential, and six houses, like 0.37, tenths of an eighth, something like that. My question is, I'm sure that will be your first, if somebody come in for that, would be the first one, but is there, is it affordable housing? What is it for?
So, yeah, so the answer really is, is the trade-off for below-market rates with increased density for the developer.
All right, question I have then is, is there, if I apply for one, is there a set limit on my income?
It's not, it doesn't relate to you. It relates to the market price, either rent or cost of, if these are properties for sale, then they are limited, and there's math involved, that in order, the price, if it's for sale, let me see if I get this right, Glenn. The price, if the lot, if of the six lots that you're, in a development, two are designated that have to be below market, that price has to be a price that a person could buy using conventional mortgage debt and standard terms, and they would need to qualify for that mortgage based on achieving, having, earning at least 80% or less of the, yeah, 80% or less of the median income for the town of Simsbury as determined by the statistical...
What is the median income?
Can I comment on that? Yeah, so the, there's one thing I want to mention about that. The standard is 80% of the median income, but it's actually of Hartford County. The dollar figure noted is $87,700. In fact, Simsbury's median income is a great deal more than that. It's roughly $125,000 is the median family income. But the standard that we're going against is the 87.7, which is Hartford County. So if you make 80% of 87.7, then you qualify for this. But it should be noted that that is, that is actually 56% of Simsbury's income, not 80% of Simsbury's income. But that is the standard we use and we need to use to be able to get credit for this as far as the 10%, you know, affordable housing situation.
Does it have to be on water and sewer?
Pardon me? Yes. Yes.
And there's a, have you seen, does he have that?
These are on the website also, right?
Yeah.
Hiram?
Yes, they are.
Let me ask you another question because you had some problems. Many years ago, we approved housing from a church group from Weathersfield, I think, or Hartford, came out, built some houses, and you had to have a certain income. I don't know how they judged it, if they had. But once some of the families, as they lived here, their income got above what they were supposed to have for housing, and they had a hard time getting them out of there. What happens here?
So the issue is whether it's a purchased property, in which case the restriction goes with the deed, or if it's a rental property, if after a year they have to requalify for the new lease. If they don't, then they have to leave.
What's the qualification?
Same qualification, same, the percentage of the income, whatever that, the designated minimum or maximum income is that would qualify for the exemption.
What does the town get for the loss?
What does the town get?
Yeah. Don't they get, if there's six lots at the end of the street, wouldn't they get $3,000 for some of the lots?
And that's only if we comply with the state program. This regulation is, go back a couple notches from that program. So I would say that if this regulation were to pass, the town can't counter that money. There's no way that the town will...
And these are not, they're...
I personally don't think you need this zone. Thank you for that.
Thank you for sharing. Anyone else care to speak? Going once?
[laughing]
Going twice? All right. So thank you very much. We now have the option as a commission to leave this open or to close the public hearing.
I would make a comment that when we left the last meeting, we said we would make an effort to give some publicity to this, and I'm not sure whether, that has not happened for a lot of reasons, and I just wonder whether or not we want to make an effort to publicize the program a little more and hold the public hearing open.
Well, it's always our hope that we get actual feedback that we can use in our deliberations, and so we appreciate Jim's comments, but, you know, there should be options. So I would be fine leaving this open and hope that the local press picks up tonight's discussion, therefore, we could have additional comments at the beginning of the 15th meeting.
Yeah, and I, I'm fine with that, but I would like if we are going to have the comments, you know, and the buzz from this meeting to be able to be into the public, that we also simultaneously make sure that some of the frequently asked questions and also go with whatever press maybe does, because I think there is a lot of misinformation about this type of work, and, and in many ways, we were lucky as a commission to hear some of the best and the, you know, best possible projects that are happening all over the state, professionals who were able to tell us, you know, answer our questions, many of which were very similar to yours, Jim. And I think once we were able to hear that, we were comfortable with and actually excited, to be quite honest, excited about the prospect of making Simsbury, having Simsbury continue to be a vibrant community where we have lots of people living and working. So I hope that whatever comes out of the public kind of press, that we make sure that, you know, they have also a chance to see some of the stuff that we saw.
As I said in my opening comments, we have looked at this from several different sides and several different angles, and there were a lot about what was presented early that we had great issues with. And I think when we get to the discussion about the vote on this particular topic, a lot of that will come out. We're glad to share that, but the idea tonight was really to let us listen. But things about the discretion that is here, the wide range of size and kinds of properties that might fall into this, I mean, when we first looked at this, there was a large development with lots of apartments all the way down to the property that Jim referred to, which was, you know, basically an acre plus or minus for, you know, six houses. And so we've had a chance to think about a lot of those things and what we've come up with. And I would, I would also say, while we're still in the public hearing tonight, that I agree with Hiram's conclusion about the town attorney's assessments, the fact that we deliberately didn't, it wasn't an oversight that we didn't designate specific zones that could or couldn't be because there are properties that could potentially be PDAs or mixed use, and we didn't want to bias this to purely residential areas because we think some of this could really work well in other areas. And to the minimum and the maximum, there was a wide range of properties that were originally looked at, and so to say that too big, that one was too big or too small didn't seem appropriate to us. And the level of discretion that we were granted in the way we've drafted this was intentional, so. So I guess before we, yes, Nancy.
I'm just quickly reading this and seeing how much we're talking about. Ten and seven, under three, and under five B, that it's a median income for Simsbury.
But it's not, actually. It says that, but it's actually, it's a HUD standard, which is a Hartford County standard. So I think it was important just to point out that we're not looking at 80% of Simsbury's median income, which is 125,000. We're looking at 80% of the HUD Hartford County standard, which is $87,700. So what we're doing is we're making this available to people who actually earn 56% of Simsbury's median income.
So I get all that. I'm just saying, does it, yeah.
We should obviously modify that. That's one of the...
We should make that reference correct. Glenn?
I think Will's correct. The phraseology, area median income is, are the three key words, and perhaps it would be helpful in the regulation if we maybe just, I hate to put quotations around stuff that aren't really quotations, but I think that is a term of art. Will is correct, and I think putting those three words in quotation marks, I think, would clarify for people that that's something to Google and learn.
We should make those edits, yeah. And we make the exact reference that Will refers to in the examples that we gave where we say...
Why do they use a group of median incomes rather than Simsbury? That's where they're going to live.
Yeah, it's, one of the things that's interesting is, there is a target, a statewide target, that each town has 10% of afford, what they call affordable housing. So if we didn't, if we adjusted this and made it actually 80% of Simsbury's income level, we then wouldn't be able to qualify any houses that we end up use, that use this overlay zone for that 10%. So that's one of the reasons why we, if we, if we want to be able to get some credit toward that 10% that the state would like us to have, we would need to keep that same standard level. We don't have to, but that would be a reason to do that.
How many affordable houses do we have present? Everybody know?
About 3%.
We're about 3.
15%.
Three.
3, 3%.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that, you know, really hits home is, you know, $87,000 seems, you know, it's kind of...
They're going to live here.
What's that?
They're going to live here, not in the Hartford County.
Yeah, I know. I just kind of feel like when we look at the different types of families that actually live in Simsbury, there is a much larger diversity of people than I think we recognize. While the median income might be much higher, there's a lot more people that actually fit into a lower level of income that are really wanting to stay here, and I cite senior citizens as one of them, and I think we are going to be really, you know, we're really not going to have diversity of people if we are only going to be able to have a certain type...
I have no objection to the people that are going to move in there. My question, if you're going to extend the thing, think about it, drive around town and see where you think this zone would be effective. You've got to have the sewer, you've got to have the water.
Right, right.
Take a look and see how many parcels...
Well, you know it better than I do, but...
We're approving the parcels now. We're just...
Yeah, we're just...
We have to go through the approval process, right?
Yeah, it has to go through.
I think it's very difficult for anybody to put in new housing without getting waters and sewers. I mean, the water and sewer people are very aggressive about making sure everybody gets signed up. So I think that's...
My, just, my take on it is, I'm thinking about the kids that get out of college who, you know, we got out of college, we didn't live at home, at least a lot of the people I knew. We got jobs and we had apartments, and if I didn't have my grandfather in town, I wouldn't have bought my first property. I would have been living in a condo, so, and paying rent for a long time. So this gives maybe some young adults who get out of college and get their first job an opportunity to stay in the town that they grew up in and grow here and then hopefully stay and raise families. So it's, I think you've got to think a little bit broader, too. Who else is going to qualify for this other than what you think it's going to be? It's broader than that.
Remember, this is also those that are statutorily limited. Our housing stock includes more affordable housing units that don't qualify because they haven't been restricted. So we've got to get to 10% because of the state policy, but we have lots of other lower-income housing that doesn't qualify for this.
I'm sure we exceed the 10% if you just counted houses in town or...
You can't count the ones that haven't been...
But you can't count them unless they're de-restricted. And I think to what you were talking about earlier about some problem areas in the past, I think that was more problems with the management of them than it was with the concept.
Who's going to be manager here?
That's a good question.
It's a question we struggle a lot with.
We did, and we had a presentation about how these types of programs run and what type of management. In fact, there was an emphasis put on it because I think people tend to think that you can just sort of like put one person in charge and have them take care of everything. And we had our friend from the Virginia Connolly, what's Joe, Joe?
Ed.
Ed, right, Ed. He came in and he was speaking about it, and I frankly took his side, and I said, "You can't manage properties with one person. You have to have a good system, and if you don't do that, then you will get into trouble." So I think it's a premium for how we talked about it and how we thought about this, you know. That's a very big plank of a type of program like this, and we were told, we were given a presentation... And we were told, we were given a presentation by a company that actually does do it and does a good job at it, and I think it would be something we always consider very strongly.
And it's included specifically in the rate that that has to be part of an application.
Right.
Well, again, and I had this conversation earlier with Hiram, I didn't share it with you folks, but I was concerned about how one would enforce that process as well. And keep in mind, we'll have total discretion on a project by project basis, and if we're not convinced that there's a control there that's going to work and last, there's no reason to approve it. We don't want the result of walking away.
Nancy.
I just have a follow-up question to the 3%. With what's built or what's approved? Are we at that number?
What's currently built and, and deed restricted. The total number of, for example, in Meadowhead, there's 74 units there that ultimately, if that project is ever built, could go into that pool as well, but they don't count until they've actually been built.
And then up at Dorset as well? Are those?
None so far.
We have no, no knowledge that any of those are going to be deed restricted in any way. The, the specialty housing is a special need, is a special.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Doesn't count.
Is, is the, the property at, that was originally done by Anson Bickford Realty, are those still deed restricted, those six houses?
No, we, the ones that were originally deed restricted are still that way, but it's not a price restriction. It's a, it's a, it's not an income restriction, it's not affordable housing. There's a restriction on how much the price can go up. And the irony is, it never really worked the way it should, because there was two guys, one would be part of the CPI. If you follow that, the houses aren't even worth what the CPI has taken them up to. What was worse than that, though, because that really didn't turn out to be a problem, but people generally don't like to purchase restricted homes, and the people that did were having an awful time getting mortgages. So you have to be careful from a mortgage perspective whether anyone will finance these, because your standard lenders don't want to have that deed restriction. So all of a sudden, you create a problem where somebody has bought a house or wants to buy a house, and if they don't have cash, they may not be able to get a mortgage. And the irony is, you're trying to offer these to people that don't really have a lot of money. We were able to sell them because we were selling to an older population that was selling a house and downsizing, so they had cash. You bring in a young couple, they couldn't afford it, and they can't get a mortgage. So it, it's in conflict with what you're trying to accomplish. The other thing that's going to be hard to do with what you're proceeding with is, from a developer's perspective, land is expensive in Simsbury. So even though you're trying to reach a general Hartford area metric, land in Simsbury might be 20, 30, 40% more expensive, which is automatically going to give you another problem. And then the last problem is, and the reason why it probably hasn't been well attended is you haven't designated an area where no one's come forward. As soon as somebody comes forward with a project and they find out that they're next to an expensive neighborhood, you're going to have 50 people in here saying, whoa, I like the idea, I think it's great, but I don't want them here, put them somewhere else. So you, there's a lot of issues with this. It's all worthwhile, but it's not easy, and from a developer's perspective, it's going to be hard to make the numbers work.
We appreciate that, and.
Were those, were those units that were built in Powder Forest?
Yes.
Did they qualify for the?
No.
No. Okay.
Because they were price restricted instead of income restricted.
Right, so that was something that we imposed as a zoning commission, but it had nothing to do with conforming to the state's report.
And it made a lot of sense at the time, because the price appreciation was going nuts at that point in time. Everybody's saying, wow, you're building these smaller homes, but the prices are going up so fast, nobody's going to be able to afford them. Well, in reality, in real estate, things go up and things go down. And, you know, they were the hardest ones to sell. And it wasn't so much that it was a duplex, because the duplex next door would sell easily, but the restricted home was always a problem.
I can tell you, too, that the, the mortgage issue is something that's not gone unnoticed by people that are talking about these types of regulations. And the Partnership for Strong Communities in Hartford has had a series of seminars about this, and the last one was attended by a series of state agencies. And they're, they're well aware of the potential financing issues, and they're trying to make it, trying to work through that with, with lending institutions that actually will participate as well. So it's a problem that's known, there's no question about it, trying to work through that.
Just if I can, Glenn Chalder, for the record, the other thing is that the Connecticut, CHFA, Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, makes mortgages available for people who are income qualified. So if you qualify for the 80% of, of area median income, you have CHFA as available to you as a source of money. So money's not a prob, getting the mortgage, if you will, there are lenders who will do it, because you qualify for it. The situation that was previously described as a market condition with a price restriction, and it wasn't an income restriction, so it was really a sort of very different, it's sort of the other side of the coin, if you will. And it hasn't been an issue for the number of developments, which we heard about back in February.
Thank you all for your comments. We appreciate it. It's, our perpetual challenge here is to balance the, the greater good with, you know, good intentions and ultimately incentives aligned to support that, and we'll, we'll see where we end up. But we've, we appreciate all of that input. We've thought long and hard about a lot of this, so. We will move on to our next agenda item. The public hearing will remain open until the April 15th meeting. For the commission's benefit, I would hope that at that meeting, we could close the public hearing and have a, one more robust debate about the topic, and with the goal of hopefully trying to get some conclusion on that. All right? All right. In terms of other business, our application 1304 has been withdrawn. Correct? And that brings us to discussion of Simsbury zoning regulation, Article 7, Section C9, accessory dwelling units, and possibly set public hearing date.
I believe everyone has seen a copy of staff's memo on these two, two parts of the regulation that we have currently. One is, as you know, when accessory apartments are applied for, the structure must have been, have been in existence for five years, and that causes a great deal of problems. As you read through the memo, for some of the applicants, the five-year requirement basically defeats the purpose of the regulation that, that it was intended and created for, to address. What happens sometimes is that, that people may have a sudden health issue that necessitates an accessory apartment, and it might be an elderly person, it might actually be a younger person coming back from school, and they don't have any place else to go, but they want their own privacy. So that's one issue. The solution was to, and staff's opinion is, and recommendation to you, would be to recommend elimination of the five-year requirement. We have structures now where people have constructed garages, and they may have a playroom over the garage. It might be a perfect situation for a, an accessory apartment, but they can't legally do it under the current regulations. So we, our staff's recommendation is that we take that recommendation to hearing, and we could do that in the near future. Second thing that, as we've talked about before on occasion, is that one-third of the gross floor area of the single-family dwelling is a limitation, or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. And the recommendation, and we've talked about this a number of times before as well, is the recommendation is to allow for a usable accessory apartment, still assuring that the apartment will be subordinate in both size and use to the primary dwelling. Our recommendation is that limit the accessory apartment to two-thirds of the gross square footage of the primary dwelling, or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. We think that covers the question that came up last time about whether you could have a, a 1,200 square foot house and a 1,000 square foot apartment. So two-thirds of a, of a small house would obviously be much less than 1,000 square feet. So we think that addresses the issue that came up last time.
I'm, I'm looking puzzled, because I thought we had done this. I really thought that we talked about this, not this, this group, but Amy.
Yeah.
Like two and a half years ago.
We talked about it, and the commission.
And we punted?
You did.
Kicked the can down the road.
Jim might remember this.
Damn, I hate that.
It's continuing.
What was the original? Yeah, you kicked it to me, thanks.
Yeah, he's like, no, we don't do that.
I think initially what people were thinking is that, you know, if you don't have some sort of restriction in there, that everyone's going to build a, a house with an accessory apartment in it, right from the get-go. I think it's been our position now, that as long as they're legal and they're controlled by the commission, and we know what it is, it's not such a bad thing.
So that would apply to new construction as well?
It would, it would, absolutely. And someone might build a house, and a year later, they decide, gee, you know, the kid's coming back from school, I don't really want him in the house, but over the garage might be fine. So that's, that's the point there. We still think, and I'll talk about this in a minute with, with the other regulation that I gave you, is that there are some other things that we can do as well to make this even better, but we think that immediately, this is a good start. We have two or three of these right now, which are problems. We're suggesting to you that if you agree, we'd like to take this to hearing at your next meeting, and see if we can get these two minor fixes done to alleviate some of those issues.
How many houses have been built in the last five years?
I can tell you that we're back to about 2,007 levels in terms of permits, Jim. Dave, I don't have the exact number right now, but there are a reasonable number. I mean, for example, the Sand Hill subdivision.
10, maybe 10? 10, maybe?
Oh, no. I mean, Sand Hill subdivision alone was 12 lots, and they're basically sold out, and that's in the last year. So the West Street alone.
Or there's more than you think, but, but not, not a lot, not a lot.
Yeah, they're not a ton, I mean, West Street is 88 apartments, and the 20 townhouses are coming in for permits on that now, which surprises me, but they're coming in for that as well. So there is, there is more than.
Townhouse P L.
For.
An accessory apartment.
No. I mean, that's, that's a special permit already.
Different question.
No. No, that's a PAD that you'd have to go through the hole here. I wouldn't recommend that, no. So anyway, that's, that's our recommendation. We think that it's, would do little or no damage.
What you're asking then is, should we, should we put this for a public hearing? Because this is a zoning change.
Correct.
A regulation change that requires a public hearing.
We, we have a lot of rooming houses in town. You're probably not aware of them.
Some of them I am.
But they exist, okay?
Yeah.
And, and there's other people that rent out apartments, or rent out sections of their They don't seem to be bothered by the five-year thing. I think most of these houses are 25, 50 years old. At what point do you, do you, I mean, are we going to end up with a town full of rooming houses? Is that, is that the, what everybody admits?
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, staff has, we, we chase a number of these things on a fairly constant basis, people that have done it illegally. And we spend an incredible amount of time on the rooming house type thing. We would just like them to become legal, and if they conform to their regulations, and we get them to give us the plans that show us that they're legal, that they don't create any safety issues, that there's no hazard to the people that live there, which is really important as well, if they meet the building code in terms of access and so on. We'd really much rather have them be illegal than not legal. We don't think this is a substantial change in the, in the regulations. Clearly, people that are building brand-new houses typically are not going to do this, but it might come to pass in the future that they may find the need to, to do it.
As I recall, there had to be some relationship, right, between the person and the accessory house.
No.
There's no restriction at all.
We did that away with that?
Well, actually, under the Fair Housing Act, we really can't do that. You can't, basically what you're saying from a land use standpoint is that a person that's related to you is a different use than somebody that's not related to you. What we really think is important, the staff agrees with this, is that the one person, the owner, has to live on the property, whether it's in the large unit or the accessory unit. It's important that one of those units be occupied by the owner of the property. That maintains the stability, keeps people in line, it doesn't let, you know, things go crazy. So we think that's really important, and that's important.
So you do this, and then you sell it. Does the restriction go with the deed? Does the owner who buys the property have to live in one of the two? Or what if they start renting those two?
Then, then it would be in violation of the regulation, the way we're proposing that it be written. I will tell you this.
It's in the deed?
If it's a special permit that runs with the land, so that if someone sells a house with an accessory apartment, it would run with the land, no question.
It's on the land records.
It is. It's, it's required.
People would not, the mortgage would not finance something that was intended to be.
Well, your lawyer, yeah, your, your lawyer shouldn't give you title insurance.
That's correct.
Okay.
And they're required to be filed on land records by law, any special permit. Anytime you approve a special permit, put that on record.
Trying to get a feel for what the five-year restriction was meant to accomplish. So right now, it's reading that you have to have been in the house for five years before you can apply to have an accessory.
House has to have existed.
The house has to.
Has to have existed for five years.
Was that, was the intent not to have people building houses that automatically had a rental unit attached?
I think that was initially the, the idea, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I think, I, I don't know, we both were probably on back in those days, and it was probably yet to avoid two-family houses, similar to the one we rented on West Street right down here.
I think one of the reasons that this started out with the old houses, people had it on, so I don't think there are any new houses that came along that started adding apartments for relatives. The reason for that came in was because of the, because there was a lot of my street that's since gone away, but they built a house, their son, they lived in a house, and they lived in an apartment next to, Jason, in the house. That was the reason, I believe, a long time ago, that's where it happened.
I'd be curious about the marketability of these houses. So you see, you take the five-year restriction off, and we're building houses in town, and builders are making all these types of apartments, and what's the marketability of these after these?
I think, I think the, I think the market is really quite good, because that's why we're seeing, what we see last time, four, three or four special permits.
I was just going to bring that up, actually, see how many people have come in to try to make what was there legal, that wasn't legal before. So now we actually know about it.
Yeah.
And I want to go back to your comment about code, because you're going to have these things that are similar to what you said, and people are going to do it anyway. Well, let's encourage it to be done legally and safely, if it's going to be done anyway. So I guess that would be my one, one argument I would have for maybe getting rid of the five-year thing. I mean, we have to change with the times, unless it's a terrible idea, which maybe people think it is, but.
We could also just make it, make it applicable to existing houses, regardless of how long they've been built.
So you mean you can't build a house with it?
Right.
They come in the day after you get your CL?
Yeah, and then they can do it.
And get them for another, for building permits.
Prevent somebody from doing a development of these things.
Revenue generating.
Yeah, but you wouldn't do a development of them, because you need the two, you need the parties interested ahead of time, right?
No, just one party.
Well, that's true.
Just the owner has to.
Yeah, just, just the owner has to.
That's true.
As long as you see, as long as you keep it as a special permit, you're going to see it before it gets built anyway. So if someone's going to build a new house, they're not going to be able to build an accessory apartment unless they get a special permit for it under our current regulations anyway. So you're going to know about it ahead of time.
You're going to get people that do these without coming in here for permits, and all of a sudden, they show up, and they go to sell a house or something.
Well, that's what we're getting now.
That's what we're getting now.
We had a case, Country Club Road, adjacent to, by your house.
Next-door neighbor.
Where you built that.
How does, the add-on was bigger than the house.
That's right. I know. Because a friend of mine was.
How did I care about this?
We call it the Marriott. That didn't come through here. That came through the building department, the guy never.
It was the, the add-on was every, it was exactly the same square footage as the house was.
Yeah. So that's for the size. I, I'm, I'm all over the size.
Marriott.
With the Marriott, yeah. Well, I, I, I think, so this, this is a good discussion. We will, let's, I, again, we're going to have a public hearing on this. We, I think we're going to have to make a decision based on.
I'm confused on the square foot thing, would you mind going over that again?
The way it reads right now, Ed, is that you can, you can do an accessory apartment,[1741.33] The way it reads right now, Ed, is that you can do an accessory apartment. It has to be no larger than one-third of the size of the existing house.
Before you add on the new square footage, this is the math we were doing at every one of these things. We were adding the square footage, and then we were dividing and multiplying. So we have to be crystal clear on this.
Right. And so, or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. So if someone's got a large house, technically, you could have a 1,000-square-foot apartment, which is a very good-sized apartment, in our opinion. You know, 700, 800 square feet is probably fine. But if you have a very small house, and you want, like you say, a 1,200, 1,300, 1,400-square-foot house, and there are a number of them in town, you really can't have an accessory apartment that really works. It's 300 or 400 square feet. It doesn't really work. And so our recommendation is to change that one-third to two-thirds of a, or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less.
So that's the maximum, though.
So if someone had a 2,000-square-foot house, they could add a 1,600-square-foot addition or something?
Correct.
Well, no, 1,000 square feet would be the max.
1,300, oh, yeah, that's right.
That's right. It's got to be less than 1,000.
Right. So it's going to stay, the less of the 1,000 stays.
Yeah, it's going to stay.
That's right.
What happened to the 670 square feet? Isn't that, what's in there now?
It just says one-third, Jim. One-third of the size of the existing house.
Okay, I thought it was six.
And that's actually existing habitable area. So if you have a garage or something, or a boiler room, we don't count that, but it's habitable space.
But that's the same way that you count any kind of.
Very normal.
Square footage for a house.
I think we did change, I think we changed it from 670 to a third, and 1,000.
We plowed this ground.
We did.
I don't know if we ever actually discovered this. But we used to be doing adding and subtracting and multiplying.
I think it seems, makes sense that if it's just, if you have a 1,000 in there.
There was a number like 670 or something.
The guy, Terry Klein, rode over the other side. He put a loft in, remember that one? Were you here for that one?
I think that was before me.
He put a loft in, it was going to be another bedroom.
All right, so we can get this done, we need, I guess, we need to make a recommendation as a zoning commission to put this on a public hearing. So we really have to pay attention to what it is we're going to propose. And so there are, how many recommendations? Three?
Two.
Two, just two. So one is to eliminate the five-year, and the other is to go to this, no more than two-thirds or 1,000 square feet.
Correct.
So I'll leave with my chin and say, I think that the 1,000 square feet or two-thirds is, I think that's a good compromise. The five-year, I guess I'm okay with it, although I'm concerned about a brand-new development of houses, all of which have in-law apartments. Is that an unintended consequence of this change?
Income properties, because we've been seeing in-law apartments, which we, which as I was pointing out, we can't really restrict it to that.
We should call what it is, accessory apartment, that still requires that the owner be an occupier.
Owner occupant.
Still owner-occupied.
Yeah.
And if, I mean, maybe your friends are better than your family. I mean, you'd rather have them live there.
Do we eliminate, do we eliminate to one apartment?
Yes. Yes. So I could see that that could be, you know, a development of such houses could be attractive, but requiring that the owner be occupied. And I don't understand, I don't see an advantage to us to eliminate that as a possibility if, in fact, all you had to do was buy five-year-old houses and convert them by adding on. We should have to do that one at a time. So what do we think?
Because Hiram says they've got to get a special exception.
To do it.
To do it. And so somebody would have to come in here with a development, right?
Yeah, it's going to get by planning first, and then it's going to come here for a special exemption, and so.
This is new construction we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, there's a fail-safe.
So that's quite a bit of control there.
I would agree with the staff recommendation.
I would, too.
I would, too.
And they'd have to stay within the setbacks.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
All of that, all of them apply.
No, that doesn't apply anymore.
All right, so I guess it would be neat and tidy if we had a motion to put up for a public hearing these two changes to the zoning regulations.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we'll set that for the 15th, for the next week.
Well, do we want to do it on the same day as the other?
Yeah. Is that too quick?
Based on the amount of people who came today, I don't think.
I think we'll be okay.
I think we'll be okay, and Hiram has three of them that he's bringing in next week anyways.
That's fine.
Yeah. I see, we've had plenty of these, and there would be more like we've looked at. I think that'd be true. All right. And then, all that's left is adjournment.
I'd like to add one comment.
Yeah.
Last time, the issue came up of special exceptions and time limits. And we granted stop-and-shop a three-year special exception to have that temporary building on the property.
Yeah, the greenhouse.
As Hiram said earlier, these special exceptions go on the record, land use record or the land record. And I'd like to ask the town attorney whether or not having a time limit on it is permissible. If we give somebody a special exception for a use, and we've gone through the eight items in our zoning regs that you use to judge, we reach the judgment that it's okay, and that goes with that property, even if it's sold, how can we add a time limit to such a special exception? And it almost seems to me we can't.
Yeah. I can tell you that you can condition a special permit, special exception, the same thing with regard to a time limit, if you do it upfront. Can't do it later on. You can't say, oh, we meant to do this, whatever. Give you an example. It's a little bit different, but just for the sake of discussion this evening. Zoning Board of Appeals in one town, somebody came in and said, you know, my husband is in a wheelchair, and I need to have this setback for this ramp that doesn't meet the regulations, and so on and so forth. Well, eventually, and it was allowed, and then eventually, the person moved away from the property, whether they passed away or went to somewhere else, I'm not sure, but there were still, the town was still stuck with a ramp that didn't meet the requirements. And basically, what it said was, because they didn't put a time limit on it, there was no specific restriction on it when it was granted, that variance ran with the land. There was no question about it. Typically, variances run with the land anyway. But for that particular situation, the only reason they gave the variance was because someone who lived in the house at that time had a particular affliction, right?
The best is EBA issue.
Yeah, exactly.
Talking about, is we, somebody comes in here and says, I've got a property in this place, and I want to do this kind of use here. We're supposed to look at the standards and say it's safe and okay. And if we conclude that, we can't conclude that on a temporal basis. It's good for three years.
I don't know. I think this is a little different, though, Dave, because this was a specific use and for a building.
They've been doing it for 20 years.
But it's a temporary thing. I know you're right, Dave, but I agree. I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No, no. I would say that if, you know, after we grant this, a year in, Stop &amp; Shop sells out, and, you know, this is the first medical marijuana dispensary.
But that's a use change.
So you're saying that they could have the greenhouse to do whatever, yeah, to.
Do whatever's legal in the greenhouse.
They could say their use was retail, sales, and it wouldn't make any difference.
I've just not seen the conflict with having a time permit. I guess you're saying that it becomes something that's.
It's a safety valve.
It's something that we're, there's a right that we've added to the property.
Could that be a licensing agreement rather than a special exception?
We offer special permits for liquor licenses, for example, that are time-specific. It's just one day.
I don't think so. That's another point. If we give special exception to serve liquor in a property, we're supposed to be considering all of the safety aspects, but that.
Yeah, but it's for a limited time. How is that different?
We've done that, and my question is whether that's really legal or not, whether that's justified.
Well, it's a valid, if you really are concerned about it, Dave, we can ask, Hiram to ask Bob if that's true.
I'd like to hear what Bob says about it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Should I change things a little bit, right? Just think about that liquor permit scenario. You going to approve that, knowing it's in?
You do it one time, and therefore, it's on there forever? I.
The next question is, what provisions should we have in our regulation for rescinding these things? We've got the guy, the corn cop place in the north end of town. They had the right to sell liquor. And that should go with the property. So the next guy, we gave him permission to go in there and do whatever, but if somebody else comes in and takes that over, says, hey, this was, this had a permission to sell liquor here.
He still needs a license from the liquor.
From the state.
But there's a time limit on that, too. If it's not used for a certain amount of time, it expires.
But that's the state.
Yeah.
We have something like gas stations, right? The gas station, the use goes away, and you can't come and bring it back as a gas station.
If those tanks are in the ground and the pumps are still there, I can tell you, you will have one heck of a time saying that it was discontinued. Now, if the pumps were taken away, and the tanks were removed, and the property was, say, marketed for some other purpose, a grocery store or something else, then you have a much better chance. But what's key in these issues is the intent to discontinue. And if the intent to discontinue is made clear, for example, if you ask somebody, do you intend to sell liquor from this particular location? And I think in that case, the person said, no, we don't. Then that is clear, a clear indication of intent, and that's the difference between these things going forward or not. I'm happy to ask Bob.
Okay. I think, yeah, that's fine. One other item of business is that the subcommittee of Dave, Ed, and I, that was, took on the task of looking at dealing with the charter revision for the design review board, has met a couple of times, and we're going to have a recommendation that you will receive before our next meeting, just of the process that we'll go undertake to try to seat the new design, or not new, but use the change in how those are, how they're appointed.